Good morning. I'm County Manager Bryant Morehead, and I call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for December 1st. At this time, I'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the prayer of Sheriff Bill Wilkie.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat briefly. Today's prayer comes from Proverbs, Chapter 2, Beginning of Verse 6. It says this: "For the Lord grants wisdom; from his mouth come knowledge and understanding; he grants a treasure of common sense to the honest; he is a shield to those who walk with integrity. He guards the paths of the just and protects those who are faithful to him. Then you will understand what is right, just, and fair, and you will find the right way to go. For wisdom will enter your heart, and knowledge will fill you with joy; wise choices will watch over you; understanding will keep you safe." I would invite you to join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. And as we go about the business of the people, I would pray that you would give us wisdom and understanding, and encourage us each and every moment of our lives to walk with integrity, and to stick up for those who can't stick up for themselves, and to be just, and to seek righteousness at every turn. As we conduct today's business, Lord, I just pray that your presence be here among us, and that our operations as government officials seek to first serve the people of this county in a way that pleases you and takes care of this county. It's in the name of Jesus that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next on the agenda is a public hearing. We have none, so the next would be a public comment section. We have one speaker. Kyle Edwards. Mr. Edwards?
I hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. I've got a little bit of a hearing problem, so I can hear you, I can hear me good on this microphone. I don't know how good I want to be able to hear you all. I have, I have come here today to express my upset. I am a current, I can't hardly see that, I don't know. I am with current system, Haywood County Environmental Service Department. My name is Kyle Edwards, a native of Haywood County, U.S. Army, 100% disabled, service-connected veteran, and a general contractor. I have been a member of the Masonic Lodge for 55 years, and a member of the Shriner for 45 years. A former Maggie Valley Alderman for 21 years, an owner and builder of a stomping ground for 43 years, and owner and builder of an RV park, camping country in Maggie Valley, North Carolina. I was accused by someone in the Environmental Health Department of spitting on a woman while she was out at my property in regards to a septic tank. This was a lie, and I would never do nothing like that. Anyone knowing me knows that. The county manager was informed incorrectly about my land being lugged, but I invited county commissioners to come observe the location, and he is in agreements with me, and the state of property, and the state of the property being in good condition. I invite all commissioners to come visit the property. In my 30 years' experience in septic tanks, I have never been, I've always been successful on record by the county. I've never had a failure in 30 years, and I stand by my record. My twin brother Berlin is a professional engineer, and he completed a PERC test, which is no longer accepted by the state, that has been used for the 50 years, or the past 50 years. It was denied by the department, but it passed inspection. Attached is a letter of approval for four sites. I paid for 10 sites, and got no credit for the others. All kinds of stipulations. I have a licensed installer to do the work with my supervision. I do not need help from the Environmental Department. I have put in more septic tanks than the current inspectors ever looked at combined. And if sole silence is needed, I am requesting the county pay for the cost. I spoke with Jody Person, county planner, and she stated an argument about Rebus Mountain Road is all, it passed all regulations. I asked her to come out and observe this area herself, and she continued to argue, so I hung up. I ended the call. I have many years of experience working for heavy, experience in roads, working in the heavy, I have, I had an unlimited license contractor myself, and I know the rules and regulation of roads. If you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen. Common sense is, is an answer, and you should try to, to sometimes, try it sometimes, or start with the truth. I'll stand my ground. Thank you very much, and I'd like you to observe it and take, take a note of it because it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. No other citizens have signed up. Now we'll move to the organizational section of our agenda. At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
I'd like to nominate Kevin Enzley for Chair.
Okay. Have Kevin Enzley nominate as Chair. Second by Commissioner Long. Any other nominations for Chair? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations. And I have one nomination of Kevin Enzley for Board Chair. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. I'll open the floor for, to the Commissioners to accept nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Brendan Rogers to be Vice Chair.
Okay. Are there any other motions? Okay, we've, we have elected Vice Chair, for Vice Chair, Brendan Rogers. Okay, so we, okay. Is there a motion? So Tommy made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. This is a formality we have to do every December. Okay, I'm going to request approval of the 2026 holiday meeting schedule. You want to have any questions about that? I think it's, do y'all have that in your packets?
I make a motion, we accept the schedule for 26.
Okay. Any discussion at all? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. We have set that. Okay, next order of business will be constituent concerns. Does anyone have anything constituent concern-wise? Hearing none, I'll move to administrative agency reports and presentations. We do not have any of that today. I do not have a discussion or adjustment to the agenda. Does anybody have anything? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I have five items on the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions about the five items on the consent agenda?
On the, number one, we found a, just a typo in there. Amy's fixing it.
Okay. Okay. And we'll, let's see, how did you phrase that, Amy, that we'll?
If you'd like to prove that as amended, excuse me, Mr. Brendan, a typo in the consent agenda, item number four, the discussion on that, the revenue charge, I believe, 26,000 to 26,000. So I will write that, and we will see what you.
Well, I'd, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes with the correction, as our clerk stated.
You want to amend that to be the whole consent agenda?
Twenty-six, wasn't it? Instead of six, it was a typo.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's correct, Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was for the minutes. Can we do the consent agenda, just to be sure? Okay.
I'd move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
The other four items on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, now, is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll, I'll call for, let's see, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Okay, next order of business, our regular agenda. We need to request approval of a budget amendment for SR 911 Fund, $11,337 to appropriate fund balance for the purchase of eight 911 workstations. Expenditure has been pre-approved by the 911 PSAP Board. What does PSAP mean?
Shanda may have to correct me, but my best memory is it is Public Safety Answering Point. Am I right, Shanda? Okay.
She got the nod.
Yes. So this goes with item number five on the consent agenda. We put out to bid for eight 911 workstations. In the regular budget, we budgeted $180,000 of that in the PSAP fund, so we're asking for $11,337 from Fund 23 PSAP fund balance to complete that project.
Okay. Any questions?
I think it might be important, just for the public's knowledge, to let them understand what these workstations are about, if, if you don't mind to come up maybe and explain that. I mean, I think we're all aware of it, but I think for the public's knowledge, it'd be good to, to understand that, you know? That system, you don't, you don't pay it much attention until you need it, and then when you need it, you want everything to work correctly, so.
So basically, it's an ergonomic, like a workstation, that holds six to eight monitors, roughly, for your phone, your radio, your computers. They lift, they, they'll raise, they'll lower, they have heat, they have air, because basically, those folks sit there for 12 hours at a time, 24/7, 365. So that is, that is their office. And there's eight of those throughout the center.
And a lot of folks probably don't understand until you've been in that room and see what all happens. It truly is a war room, you know, where all the calls are coming in, and it can get chaotic at times, so it's a much-needed thing.
Absolutely. And the old ones are 10 years old, and the board allows you to replace those every 10 years. So that's how long they last.
And getting this PSAP money is definitely beneficial. We're only going to approve a little over $11,000, so it's definitely helpful. Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
Shanda, I know you're up here kind of on the spot, this may be a little off-topic, but how many calls are y'all averaging a day now?
Last year, we did like 168,000 phone calls a day. I've not broken up this past month yet, but normally, anywhere from 2,500 to 4,000, it just depends on what's going on in the county.
Wow.
So, and that's fire, medical, and law. And then we dispatch for all those as well.
And I would remind everyone that our 911 group was a state award-winning 911 group here a couple of years ago, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Say that again, how many calls per, would you say?
Last year, it was 168,000 for the year, and that's 911 and admin, which admin calls are, are 911 as well. That's your fire alarms, your medical alarms, and anyone calling for the sheriff's office.
2,500 a day.
It, it just depends on the day, what's going on. It could be 500, it could be 1,000, it could be 2,000, just depends on what's happening, if it's a snowstorm, floods.
Yeah.
Exactly. It just depends on what's going on that day.
You got a lot of calls that day, even though the phones were out, did you?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
There's a few worked, and that overwhelmed us, so, yeah.
I appreciate those folks. They are the calm, calm voice when, you know, our worlds are coming apart, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I've visited in there a couple of times, and it's, they're all, you know, like ducks on the water. You don't know it rattles them, but it definitely scares the rest of us, so thanks for what y'all do.
Thank you.
Motion in this.
I make a motion to approve that item. Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, item number two is request approval of a resolution authorizing the purchase of sports lighting equipment per exception to competitive bidding requirements. Right, and I'll let you explain that, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, we've worked with Mr. McKay on this lighting project, and it might be good for him to come up and give an overview. He could probably explain to you what we're accomplishing, but these two items, number two and three, are to make sure that we follow state procurement laws, and also then to appropriate the money from fund balance. But the details, I'll turn it over to Mr. McKay.
Okay, Mackey, you can come on up and let us know. I spoke with Mackey about this, and this has to do with lighting at the Elks Lodge for, the Elks Club for the baseball field that got, when the flood came, it wiped them out pretty much, and so they, being a nonprofit, they're having trouble getting FEMA and insurance to pay for that. So go ahead, Mackey, let us know.
Thank you. I'm Mackey McKay. I've been involved in the rebuilding of the Little League, Mount near Little League baseball field at the Elks Lodge. That field was destroyed during the hurricane. At this point, and that destruction included the lighting, at this point, we've rebuilt the field, and we're very proud of what we've done there with volunteer money and just hard work on a lot of people's part. But we're at a point now where, while the field is playable, and we have played on that field in October, without lighting, we only get 50% of the use of the field because half of the games for the Little League are at night. So we, we're looking for a way to get lighting for that field. I've been involved with Musco Lighting for 20 years or so, going back to helping them put in lighting for the Western Carolina baseball field. So my first thing I did was contact them to see the possibility of getting lighting system for the Elks Field. Musco is considered the premier sports lighting field, sports lighting company in the world. They have a system that has a 25-year guarantee. They have proven to stand by that guarantee at Western, I know from personal experience, and they have put in fields in North Carolina. They're presently constructing new lighting at Western Carolina University. They have Little League fields around Western North Carolina and all throughout the state. The system is completely remote-controlled. They are monitoring the lighting capacity from Iowa. So we, we think that's the best that we can do. So we had them to come to the field, design a system, and give us a price for that system. There has been some concern about the future of the lighting, and that we don't own the land. The Little League field there is a regulation Little League field, and the Musco lighting system is a modular system. So worst-case situation is, the land is no longer there, we can take our system and go to any standard Little League field. So what we've done now is, we're asking the county commissioners to contribute to the purchase of that lighting. So I'd be willing to answer any question.
And then, so that, that is in a flood area, and you might explain what, that you'll be the concrete?
Okay. The way this system is constructed, there's a concrete base, a cone that goes in the ground, and that system, that cone goes in the ground 10 feet. It extends above the ground, and then a galvanized steel pole is slid onto that base. All of the components of the lighting system are 10 feet above the ground for several reasons, one being flood control, or flood management, but the other one is just protecting the system against anybody trying to get into it. At the Elks Field, the 100-year flood elevation is roughly 30 inches, and this past year, past hurricane, the water was about 24 inches deep. So everything that we've done there, as far as from building the dugouts to putting in this lighting system, will be flood-resistant.
And then, you're a professional engineer also, I should have said that, so you're licensed to?
I'm a licensed civil engineer in North Carolina.
Anybody have any other questions about that? Okay.
Just wanted to add, and, and we've talked, Mr. McKay, from the county's perspective, we, we don't have the agreement complete yet, an MOU about how we would proceed, but in that, we would also have a clawback provision, should that property not be used for Little League in some fashion, that, that the county could recoup those funds if, if that public purpose of funding Little League didn't exist. Frank may have something to add, but he and I've talked, and we're working on that MOU. We can do that.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, all right, so can I, can we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? This is item two of the regular agenda. Which is the resolution?
I second the motion with discussion, but we're gonna, you're gonna get the MOU in hand before we release the money, is that correct? And so the county has protection, and we have a clawback clause.
Correct, yes. We'll, we'll have to formalize that before we can release the funds.
Yeah. Also, we'll make a comment. I, I'm a kind of a big supporter of Little League. My kids played Little League. I remember Mr. McKay, when we played the All-Star tournaments over here at Waynesville Elks Club, and I remember him doing groundskeeping and, and actually being around over, he probably don't remember me, but that's been years ago, and I, I remember, I remember years ago, my brother carried me over here and signed me up to play down at the VFW field, little farm league over there, played, played for Toby Ray, and Mr. Arrington was his assistant coach, but did pretty good till John Jones found, Johnny Jones, John Jones found out I lived in Canton Address, so I had to go to play Little League in Canton, which that was great, I, I lived over there, but I kind of live in between, but, but anyway, I played Little League on that field, and, and my kids played, and I, I think it's kind of an extension of our parks and recreation. I think this is a good project for our kids. Playing ball is a good thing, teaches them a lot of life lessons, and I'd rather have them doing that as getting involved with, with drugs and alcohol and all those kind of things. So I think it's a, it's a very, a very good, a very good project.
Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, all right. Item three is the budget amendment for 155996 to appropriate fund balance to purchase lighting for the Mount near Little League. When we were looking at this, I remember, Mackey reminded me that the, the land that we had on Jonathan Creek was supposed to be for a recreation complex, and we ended up turning that into, because we couldn't get grants at the time, that was about the time that the economy tanked, so we weren't able to get grants for that, and we trans, we decided to use it for economic development, and then we decided to sell it for housing, and we were able to make a few hundred thousand dollars, and so the way I'm looking at that is, we're taking the profits from that sale of that property to, to fund this, if you will. So I know that the money went into fund balance, but the, the whole amount of money did, but we did make some on that, so I feel like this is putting a piece of that, which is really just the profit, back into our recreation program. So I do, you know, there is a reason for being able to do that this way. And one thing... And one thing, I guess since I've been, I've been here so long, I remember, and Mackey reminded me also, in 2006, we did a recreation study, and in that study, the main thing we needed to do as a county was to take care of our existing fields and our existing facilities, and we've really not done that too much, and that was the main thrust, if you will, that came out of that meeting, or out of that study, rather, was that that's what we needed to do, instead of buying new fields and, and things like that, was just to enhance the ones we had. So, so there was two different things from the past that I wanted to make y'all aware of on that, so. But anyway, can, I have a motion to approve item three.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank y'all. Okay, that concludes our regular agenda. We'll go, we, we don't have appointments or a closed session, so before we adjourn, does anybody have anything else that you want to make? I know today's filing day, so I guess for a lot of county offices, so good luck to everybody. I did want to read something, when we, when we had public comment last time, and it's totally my fault, but I wanted to read policy about, and I know, Amy, you gave it to me. The last page here on the bottom. "We need to remember that speakers will not discuss matters regarding the candidacy of any person seeking public office, including the candidacy of a person addressing the board, the viewpoints or platforms of any political party or political action committee, or political issues currently of interest on a state or national level unless those issues relate directly to the actions under consideration of the board." So we will not, I should have stopped Mr. Hef, Kef Nepper, yeah, that's it, I should have stopped Mr. Nepper. He, he did basically just introduce himself, he really didn't make any kind of a platform other than he wanted to make sure that information was good, and that's, and that's admirable in today's world of social media, so. But I do, I'm probably going to read this at the next meeting before we have public comment, to make sure everybody understands that. And so that's in our board rules about public comment, okay? So just thought I'd remind everybody of that. Okay, does anybody else have anything?
I'd just like to thank Mackey and all of them for the work they've done. He's done four ball fields down here so far, and I want to appreciate that, because a lot of people talk about that, and they, I don't know if they tell you or not, but they do appreciate what you're doing for the county.
Yeah, Mackey's, I know he, he's redoing Dutch Fisher Field now, the lights were able to stay there, and he's rebuilt that field, because if, if we wait on FEMA, it'll never get done, let's just, let's just face the facts. So Mackey's kind of a get it done kind of guy, and, and I know the community appreciates him. I know a lot of these kids should, you know, always remember that Mackey's behind that. I don't know how many ball fields you've built, Mackey, but I guess Tuscula wouldn't have been able to play on their fields if you hadn't have been there to help them, so we appreciate all your work and all you do, because I think you're an expert in fixing baseball fields, and I think you've even been to the Little League World Series and worked on that field, isn't that right? So that's up in, where is that? In Ohio, I guess, or Pennsylvania? Okay, I ought to know that. But anyway, he's actually been up there working on those fields, so we have somebody in, in our community, it's always amazing to me that we have people in our community that have a lot of knowledge, and I don't think anybody's ever written about that, Mackey, but, but we do have some really good experts in our community to do that. We appreciate you taking this on.
Just to add to that, I know that Mr. Mackey may not remember me as well as Commissioner Long, but seems like he was always a staple around the ball field. You know, us kids knew who he was, so I was like Commissioner Long, my boys played up there on that field in the Canton All-Stars, I believe it was, Tommy, if I remember right, and we coached that team, and actually done pretty good, I think, but didn't, didn't win, but.
Well, I tell you, Brandon, all things considered, it boiled down to coaching, and we didn't, we didn't come out in the end, so.
At least we gave our best shot.
Was you the head coach?
Well, I didn't want to mention that part, no. And, and outside of that, thank you for what you do, all you guys, I know that y'all play a part as well. You got to have some good supporters behind you to be able to do what you do. And outside of that, I think it's our last meeting this year.
Got one more.
You got one more? Okay, well, that's right, sorry.
Our last first meeting of the year.
Last first meeting of the year. But anyway, just hope everybody has some, a good Christmas, that's what I wanted to mention, but I'll tell you that next meeting as well.
Well, we have a lot going on.
We got, we got a lot of great employees, and I just wanted to be sure we recognize them.
Okay. All righty. All right, I'll go and tell you the motion we adjourned.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, everybody be safe.